Okay. Welcome to the Hopkinton Planning Board meeting for Monday, January 25th. I'd like to thank HCAM for taping the program tonight, the meeting tonight. We're missing a couple of people. They might have to be reviewing the tapes so they can vote on a future hearing. So that's very important to us and also so that we can have our meetings in public with our HCAM followers and the Planning Board groupies, I guess. Our agenda today, we have a public hearing for earth removal for Eversource on South Street. We have a minor modification to 85 West Main Street. A thought for a cul-de-sac on 23 Thayer Heights Road. Continued public hearing and maybe to close it out, a subdivision road construction plan on a paper street off of Leonard Street. And we'll also be continuing the public hearing for Legacy Farms North. And plus a few other administrative things. So let's start with the public hearing for 26 South Street, Eversource Energy. This is an earth removal permit application. Come on in. The whole team can sit up on the other side. That way the microphone can be used for TV.
Okay, great. Well, good evening. My name is Mary Cage Newice. I'm an environmental specialist with Beals &amp; Thomas. I'm here tonight with Eric Lasse, Principal at our firm, and Dwayne Boyce and Mike Zillit from Eversource. Eversource is proposing to expand their existing substation at 226 South Street and is seeking an earth removal permit towards that end. The existing substation is located in the industrial zoning district and is surrounded primarily by industrial and commercial uses. The substation has two existing transformers and bus sections and a switchgear building. The equipment is surrounded by a fence and there's an access drive off South Street. The expansion consists of an addition of a new transformer and bus section, a new switchgear building, and a temporary construction access drive, which, and associated equipment including conduits and cables that will be in the vicinity of the temporary access drive. The earth removal is primarily going to be to establish a level grade for the third transformer and as well as to install the conduits and cables and for the installation of the subsurface infiltration system. Stormwater on site is going to be managed with a subsurface infiltration system in front of the proposed switchgear building. And the new surface, which will be enclosed by a fence, is going to be surfaced with trap rock. So the applicant is proposing to remove up to 2,000 cubic yards of soil from the site. There's not going to be more than 200 cubic yards stockpiled on the site at any one time and the soil stockpiles will be located outside of the onsite wetland resource area. We believe that this design for the site consists of the least impactful alternative. Other alternatives considered included expanding the station to the north, which would involve significantly more earth removal and blasting due to the presence of shallow depths to bedrock, ledge, and steep slopes. And expansion onto EMC's property would involve fill the onsite isolated vegetated wetland. So we believe that this alternative is going to be the most beneficial to the town and will allow the applicant to provide reliable electric power service to the region. The project's going to comply generally with the earth removal permit regulations. However, we are requesting a waiver from the 100-foot property line setback. Due to the constraints that I listed, we believe that the current design is not going to have a negative impact on abutting properties since it is primarily industrially zoned and surrounded by industrial properties. So the project has been peer reviewed by Beta Group Inc. in association with our notice of intent application, which is ongoing concurrently. And we respectfully request that the Planning Board issue an earth removal permit with a waiver.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah. Do you want to kind of show us where you're taking all the earth from?
Sure thing. the trap rock surface is going to be in this area of the site. North is towards me. So that's going to be the bulk of the earth removal there, as well as in association with the conduits, which I believe are in this area. And the subsurface infiltration system is going to be adjacent to South Street.
Where's your temporary access entrance?
Right there.
Right there.
Can you just show us where the wetland resources are?
Yep, sure thing. The onsite IBW is right here, right along the property boundary. It's actually drained by a concrete pipe.
Is that by EMC land?
Yes.
And is that the only wetland resource?
That's correct.
One question. Mr. Chairman, you talked about having no more than 200 yards of dirt or soil visible. Where is that going to be stored on the property and for how long a period of time will it be there?
I believe it wouldn't be stockpiled for longer than 60 days, is what I think that we had set in the application. Mike, where would stockpile on take place?
It's more than likely we're not going to stockpile anything on site, but we want to have that ability to be able to if we need to. But as far as the back right corner of the station's in the north.
Back right?
Back right. Is that back? Yeah, I'm thinking high. Right, we've got South Street down low.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Frank, did you have another question?
Yes, you mentioned the buffer. Have you communicated with the EMC?
Yes, we actually have EMC's approval to do supplemental plantings in the buffer zone on their site. Elaine has a copy of that approval.
Thank you.
Other questions from members of the board, and then I want to go through a few things on my own. Okay, let me try a few here. As I think everyone on the board knows, this project was approved without site plan approval by the DPU. The town of Hopkinton actively pursued that as an intervenor in that particular hearing and what I thought was reasonable request, all which were denied by the DPU. For one example was the height where they are 75 feet for the towers. And we proposed that the DPU give them a condition that says 75 feet, which is what they asked for. Instead, the DPU basically said unlimited, we'll just throw that zoning requirement out. So we went on all of the buffer areas and said, hey, they're asking for X number of feet on every one. And the DPU just said, screw it, we're going to give them everything they want, so whatever goes on. And quite frankly, as one that spent some time on that, I'm not terribly excited about that. But that's not what's before us today and it's not what our criteria is for earth removal permit. I think it's unfortunate that Eversource decided to pursue that line as opposed to asking just what they needed to do, as opposed to asking for the world, which they got. And quite frankly, I think the secondary feeders that come off of this are going to be more of a problem to the town than what we're currently seeing here, even though it does come right out onto the front and it's not well landscaped, et cetera. However, the items that we're at to look at is whether or not the earth removal conforms to the purpose of the chapter, whether or not it's permitted, whether it'll be injurious to the public health or safety, produce noise, dust, or other effects detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property, have material adverse effect on the health and safety of people living in the neighborhood, et cetera, will not result in traffic conditions on the road, and the regulations contained in the chapter we complied with. So that's kind of our criteria for tonight. We don't do a lot of earth removal reports, so that's why I kind of decided to go through that at that point.
Can I ask a question on that point? In terms of the traffic conditions? Will there be any situation where traffic is either halted or rerouted at all due to the earth removal?
So all the work is going to be taking place onsite within the footprint of the station. The only possible time we might have some disruption to traffic is when you bring in the transformer itself. But it's usually off hours.
And that's a one-time shot.
Do you expect any blasting?
Parking's going to be done onsite on the property.
Do you expect any blasting?
No.
Okay, so it's just digging it out?
This is digging.
Claire?
I guess it's not related, but I just see our DPW director just went out there and he has a question with Eversource's problem.
I think that problem got resolved.
Did it get resolved?
Yeah, we have, I think, power to our pump station, which was a concern.
That has been done, okay.
But in a similar mode, we have a lot of poles in the middle of streets, et cetera, that quite frankly is waiting on Eversource to do their thing. And I'll tell you, it's almost to the point where I think this board might want to talk as a separate subject to introducing legislation to get some traffic considerations going through the legislature because quite frankly, the service on the electric side of Eversource is close to miserable. We have one that's in the middle of the road that we're doing a subdivision rerouting on. And quite frankly, we have Jersey berries around it because the poles continues for the last four to almost six months, right in the middle of the road that we're trying to construct. But that's not on today's thing. But quite frankly, if you take it back to your company, that we're not happy campers with the amount of service here. Yes, Claire?
Well, I have a general question for the applicant. I'm looking at our memo from the director, and this may be just Elaine's words, but it says a waiver is requested from the requirement that there be 100-foot undisturbed buffer throughout property and street lanes. The proposed design is the most feasible layout to meet increased demand. So I'm wondering, again, this may be Elaine's wording, the most feasible layout, but if this were not granted, what, clearly this is what works best for your company, but if this waiver were not granted, what other layouts are possible? Is this the only layout or is it just the most feasible layout?
It's the least impactful layout.
Impactful, armed.
It's the smallest footprint that we can go in. So we had multiple iterations of a design and we started off with a much larger footprint and over the iterations of the designs, we compacted as much as we can. So right now, I don't know that there's any locations we do have that 100-foot undisturbed buffer.
So if the waiver were not granted, what we can't, what we could have to do?
We couldn't build the project and the town would not have a reliable source of power going into the future. The whole point of the project is to be able to increase the capacity of power in the region.
No, I understand. I just.
It's because there is a need for additional power in the region to probably benefit the project.
And where is that 100-foot buffer area again?
The property line is here and the requirement is a, would be 100-foot buffer within the property line.
Correct.
That would be undisturbed.
But you're looking for variance off that, right?
Correct.
Where in particular would that 100-foot buffer be disturbed at?
It would be primarily along this southeastern property line where the fencing would be expanded and the trap rock would be surfaced in the vicinity of the onsite wetland.
Got it. Trap rock or riprap?
No, it's a lot smaller.
Uh huh.
Riprap is like three or four inches. Trap rock is one inch maybe.
Basically, Fran, kind of to answer your question, if we were doing this as a site plan review, we wouldn't even think about earth removal. I mean, that's incidental to the project.
Yeah.
But for some reason, they think they need an earth removal project.
Well, it is a requirement that anything with a building permit that has greater than, I believe it's 150 cubic yards of earth removal, does need an earth removal permit. So that's our reasoning for seeking this approval.
We normally get it done with a site plan review.
So they're exempt from earth removal permit if they go through site plan review, but because site plan review isn't happening, then they still have to get the earth removal permit?
Right. Okay. So I think we've gotten to the point where probably most of the approval criteria can be met with appropriate conditions. And I think the appropriate conditions for establishing hours of operation should be per our bylaw on heavy equipment operation, which is what we insist on everyone.
And what are those hours?
I think they're seven to
Seven to six.
Seven to
Eight to eight hours. And nothing on Sunday for holidays.
So consistent with the town's?
Yes.
Yeah. Bond for typical this size site plan would be $5,000 in order to, in case a lot of your earth ends up on South Street and we need to clean it up. Most people get it back at the end because they don't create a mess. Is, in the site plan for your temporary access, do you have plans that show it with a construction?
Eric Lasse from Beals &amp; Thomas, yes, we do have a stabilized construction entrance proposed first 50 feet off. That was a Concom request as well, a suggestion from Beta also.
Okay. So I'm thinking of $5,000 bond like we do for most stuff. What were you thinking, Elaine, for a deposit for inspection?
I don't, it's up to the board whether you think there should be inspections and what we would have an inspector look at. These out there. The erosion control will be inspected by a Concom agent.
I think that takes care of it as far as
Yeah, I think that's adequate.
Okay. And I'd like to see maybe a condition that the stockpile is not to exceed 200 cubic yards. I mean, that's such a constrained site, I don't think you can be a stockpile on anything there and do any real work there. You might have a small pile while you're digging a trench and you haven't backfilled it yet, but you know, that's
Minor.
That's minor.
Ken, the other thing I know is in the requirements from the bylaw, item I says that the board has to set a duration of the permit, so the board would identify how long the permit is good for.
Okay.
Construction is anticipated to last 24 months.
So 24 months from today or 24 months from whenever?
From project start.
From project start. What does that mean for us?
They should notify us when the project.
So we're anticipating project starting this spring.
So basically, this permit will be good for how many years, Elaine?
24 months.
24 months.
Better not issue it until they're ready to start, otherwise it'll expire before they're done.
Well, it could begin on the, they could notify us officially of when they're starting construction and they could start from that date.
24? Okay.
Makes sense.
That works for me.
Yeah, it will certainly be done, the earthwork within that time.
Elaine, could we put a restriction that it won't start till the pole gets moved out of the middle of Franklin Road?
Any conditions you think are less relevant.
Point of clarification, so the pole issue with the wastewater treatment plant, that's the western lane?
That's done.
That's been addressed.
After three months and a great expense because we had to demobilize our contractor.
I'd be very interested in pursuing something that would help other projects in town happen sooner. Because it's one company and it would be helpful to us to have one company resolve all issues that are open right now.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can put all that on that, but I think, I'm almost convinced that we need to go to a legislation mode in that area because it's just one horror story after another on electrical service and we develop in this town and we're growing like mad. Okay. So it looks like we need to do, let's do a first vote on request for the waiver. This would be a vote to grant a waiver for a 100-foot undisturbed buffer. Seek a motion for that.
Seconded.
Seconded for the discussion. Seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Okay, so the waiver's done. And then I look for a motion to find that we meet the two criteria for the earth removal bylaw items, which is found on page two of Elaine's memo, with the following conditions: that the operation will, the permit will be for 24 months and the applicant will notify the town when it's about to start. The hours of operation will be per the noise bylaw. The bond to guarantee conformity with the conditions of permit of $5,000. Stockpiles shall not exceed 2,000, or 200 yards, cubic yards. I think that's it, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's all in one motion, I believe?
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Motion to close public hearing?
Seconded.
Oh, and there was no public outcry from anyone else on this one, I believe? Okay, so we did ask for the public. Okay, so now
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Anything abstaining, motion carries. Okay, we'll write it up in the next, well, before that poll gets moved.
Thank you very much for hearing us, Ken.
Really heard you.
Okay, let's see. We have a little bit of time here for our next piece of business. Where are we on, there are no minutes for tonight. Conley Hill Estates. Did the engineer get that?
Nope.
Okay, so that's off. Why don't we discuss zoning advisory committee articles, town meeting articles? And yeah, we see the Zack Chairman here and that way he can potentially go home earlier than not unless he likes to come back and see what we've got to do. John, why don't you come on up and let's talk.
Give me a second, Mr. Chairman. Actually, if you could, I'm saying thank you.
We've got at the end of Elaine's memo, the list of things. If you want, I can prompt you on those.
Yeah, actually, if you could brief me on them because I don't have the too early ones with me.
Okay, well, I'll
So if you could prop me on that.
Yep. Come on up here so the microphone can pick you up.
Okay. Over one more. Oh, on this side of the table.
Yeah. Okay, the first one was animal shelters. This is not formal public hearing, but this is just a process to get us starting to think about.
Yeah, and this was actually the order that we did them. And for the animal shelters, it was more that BayPath was looking to try and get a definition. Was that probably the best way to get a definition for one so that the town can continue to keep having a place for, as a, as a public animal shelter? So we don't have to build one. And then a place for them in the chance that they may have to move. One of the other things is also trying to see if there is any public land that the town may own that we may be able to lease to BayPath. That's a second, that's looking down, which is why we wrote it so that it could go in a couple of different places in town because they really do a lot of good for the town and save us a lot of money.
Okay. And that was by special permit?
Right.
So basically
Right, because they have a lot of hurdles to still jump through.
Okay, the second would be dog daycare?
Yeah, now, this was one that came to us by the inspectional department where if, we don't allow them right now. However, if somebody, somebody came to the department with a home business that just happened to do it, they could have possibly had a case for being able to do one without a restriction. Sort of what was, what happened to us with the solar one that we did before. If you don't define what you can and can't do, people might be able to find some loopholes to make it work. So what we're trying to do was define what it is and where it could go so that where it can and can't go. So we were truly using zoning for what it's meant to be. And then we got a lot of input on that from, from dog daycare owners and I'm a big user of one. Enough to, for my, do over mention.
Okay. And then, and that's also special permit?
Yeah, yeah, basically, everything still ends up being special permit, but we're just trying to do some more defining.
Hotel overlay district?
Yeah, the hotel overlay district, I think all we did was define
Just the tweak to be fixed, the amount of function space.
Right, yeah, there was, what had happened was, we tried to attract a hotel for the last, I don't know, seven to 10 years. And one of the, one of the issues that we, which pointed out to us is that we tried to design a hotel within a designed area. And what we designed is not the way they build hotels. We wanted an 8,000-square-foot ballroom and that seats over 600 people and function room, yeah, and they, right, they didn't really, they don't build function rooms that big anymore. And so if, so if we were trying to attract a, a high-end hotel, they just couldn't meet some of those requirements. So we changed that to what the, some of the other hotels in the area are doing and I think we reduced it to 1,500 or something?
1,500.
1,500 square feet, which is about 125, 150 people. But then they could also have multiple, multiple ones that they could open up if they wanted to, but not to have one big 8,000 square foot.
And then you've got three or four there still. You've got like one meeting left, I guess?
Right, yeah. Tomorrow, is it tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah, tomorrow, we're gonna, we have Elmwood Park, the Elmwood Sustainable Enterprise We're not going to be doing a, an overlay district over an industrial district. It ended up being very complicated as to what was allowed and what wasn't allowed, what was allowed by special permit. And so we basically ripped it all up and brought it down to two pages. And it's easier to understand and it's easier for people to see what we're trying to encourage and what we're trying to discourage. Because when we were trying to do it for the last three or four years with a developer in mind, it got quite complicated. And now we have no developers in mind. It's just us designing a zone that we, that we're trying to redevelop and get rid of, I always call it 16 acres, but I was corrected and said that there's well more than that of parking lot right now. And so to get rid of some of that asphalt and trying to make it green and recover And so to get rid of some of that asphalt and trying to make it green and recover some of that land.
Okay.
We did some modifications to the sign bylaw because there was a Supreme Court, did it come down? Yeah, Supreme Court basically struck down a lot of the stuff that we and many other towns did to restrict what the size of sites and content. So basically, we just can't, can't control content. And everything has to be on the level. Everybody's, so you'll see, we just, it sort of looks like some of my stuff that comes from Zach that goes to here once in a while, across the world, everywhere.
That one's gonna take a lot of review because it is.
Yeah, but basically, what we're doing is, we just, we went over what came back from Ray. It's not as complicated coming to us because basically, there's just a whole bunch of stuff he said you can't do it. And one of the ways we, one of the things happened with some of the elections, campaigning signs and some of the stuff for the marathon, a lot of that stuff would have been banned. So we had to open up that marathon month to basically say, you can almost do whatever you want for that month, just so that we could get some of our marathon stuff up and celebrate the town. And so you'll see that when it comes to it, I'll come, I'll come back again for the sign. Garden apartments, senior housing, village housing bylaws, that actually came from the planning board, so you guys probably know a hell of a lot more about it than I do. We just, we looked at some of your lines and just some of the modifications to the bylaw. And we'll continue to discuss that tomorrow. And I guess we're also, we don't, we haven't even started discussing the historic structures. I think that we're, I think somebody from your group is coming tomorrow?
We have the public hearing at the same time, so it depends on the time it is. Lane could probably.
It's a building, but may not be able to.
Happens to me a lot, this building.
I can fit for it now, but I think we probably want to move on.
Yep, yep. Okay, so we really need to get Zach's final recommendations, hopefully you'll have the quorum tomorrow and.
Yeah, we had, we had a few problems last week, so we opened and then we couldn't vote on anything because we had, we had, one of our members had to leave, so.
Okay.
We were able to discuss it, but not vote on anything.
Okay, thanks, John. Thanks to all the members of Zach.
And if the board wants a rundown on that historic one, I can talk to that later on in the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, let's, 85 West Main Street, come on up. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, it's been a while.
It has. I think we're here to talk about some minor modifications to site plan and it's almost an as-built.
Yeah, it's, well, it's basically relocating a tree.
And something with elevation, so why don't you show us.
Yeah, the elevations, it might, that store's open now, so I don't know, we can talk about it, but the big thing is the tree. So I know you guys have small plans, I brought a slightly larger one.
Kind of show us where the tree was and where it's going.
Basically, you know, it's still on right in the front corner where Verizon store is now. There's a tree that sits in this island.
Oh, that island, okay.
Yeah, it sits here closest to the gas station side. And it basically sits right in front of their sign.
Is it there now?
Tree is there now. You can't re, you don't notice it that much now because there's no leaves on it. So it's not a big deal now, but when the leaves grow out, it's going to be almost impossible to see their sign and it kind of blocks their front door. So we wanted to basically take that tree and move it over to the side, kind of at the end of where the guardrail is, at the driveway going down the side of the building.
We just don't want you to move it to a point that'll.
Block. Right.
If we do the right turn lane, which we're.
Yeah, we're keeping it, we're keeping it way out of that. We don't know we're near that. That's why we pushed it all the ways close to that guardrail as we could. So we're probably, you know, 30-something feet off the property line.
Could you put it into the other island on the corner of the Unibank?
Yeah, we did look at doing that. I think the engineer's concern was there about visibility coming around that corner because there's a lot of pedestrians who walk across right there going to Starbucks and stuff.
Is this going to be a tall tree with a trunk or a bush?
Yeah, it's, it's a tall tree, it's a red oak that's there now. But, you know, the branches kind of start around five feet or so. So someone driving by in an SUV, it's kind of at their eye level where it might be blocking it. You know, and then also, you know, coming, it's still kind of blocking signage, you know, people coming towards the highway down West Main Street, you know, might block a little bit of the front of the building. But the big thing was, you know, kind of, it's not a great spot from the visibility around the corner of that building.
How about of the island here at the corner of the driveway?
That's gonna be.
There's already a tree there.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, there's a tree sitting there right now.
And then we got 10 feet more of the, you know.
Yeah, you can't add anymore. Yeah, it's gonna be roadway there eventually, so we can't put any more there.
So where do you want to move it to?
So essentially, on the plan, it's kind of, it's clouded. See where it's moving. Moves from this island just right over there across the.
You know, part of the purpose for this landscaping, by the time you put along the edge, it serves very little purpose. Part of the purpose usually on landscaping within parking lots is to soften the look of the parking lot. You're just gonna have nothing but, you know, asphalt. And, you know, quite frankly, your tenant in Unibank, no one really questioned too much the tower element, they said that was their trademark thing. But, you know, now they've got alternating colored lights, blue and green and red. We've never looked at lighting interiorly because we never thought that was an issue, but it looks like the carnival's come to town. I've had a lot of people complain about it. People who are across the street tell us that the blue and green and red lights are on all night long. You know, if we'd ever known that they were going to be putting interior lighting that changed colors, I don't think that ever would have gone down with this board. And we worked really hard on lighting bylaws to try to develop lighting that set the correct tone and character for the town. And now you want to have an asphalt wasteland. All these businesses have their names on a monument sign. You know, the whole purpose is to soften the look. You know, it's got the Las Vegas strip going here with the colored lights, so, you know, I don't see how the people in Verizon, if their sign is out on the monument, are going to have trouble being identified. Or, you know, somewhere else in the corner, but by the time you put it along the edge, I mean, I'm not going to say don't put a tree in because I like to have more trees, but it basically serves no purpose. That's just my opinion.
Is that me?
Go ahead.
I agree with Claire 100 percent. And I'd be going no against any change from removing a tree. I'd be more than happy to have you add trees. One of the reasons, I was on the Concomitants, came up to us, and one of the reasons that this type of idea was approved by them was because it was a parking lot without any vegetation and this plan brought the vegetation into where there wasn't vegetation.
Yeah, I mean, there's still going to be vegetation there, there's still a number of shrubs and bushes in that spot. It's not like we're paving over it.
I tell you then, if I voted for it then, because that's the way, if you're going to change it now, that's, you're changing it after the fact and I don't think that's right. If you have tenants that they can't see the sign, we have a nice green town with trees. They want to do business there, they'll have trees. They'll be, hopefully they'll be fine.
Well, while we're kind of griping a little bit, the other gripe that I've heard is music outside in the Starbucks one at like eight or nine o'clock at night.
Music?
Yeah. Nice jazz.
I haven't heard about that.
But it was, it was in early December when I went by and heard it. And, you know, it was cold, nobody was out there.
Right.
I mean, you know, at least if nobody's out there, tell them to turn the outside speakers off.
Yeah.
I mean, and I heard it across the street.
Yeah.
And so Cliff, the guy across your neighbor, is probably not terribly happy about that. Though he probably likes a nice jazz, but, I mean.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I, my involvement as far as all that stuff goes kind of ended when we turned the thing over. Like, example, the colored lights, I didn't even know about that either until someone sent me a picture two days ago.
I've been hearing a lot about the colored lights.
I hadn't even seen it, I hadn't even seen it on there. There are things they submitted to me as far as their working drawings go. I guess they must have looked at it and figured it was allowed and.
The colored lights are, it's.
Or wasn't prohibited, I should say.
It is kind of unique. I mean, it's, and not, not in a good way either.
And that's a gateway to Hopton.
I mean, it's, I thought originally it was just during the grand opening week, but I've seen it since.
It's on every night.
I would also mention that the current tenant at Verizon, and this may be just from the scheduling error, but they were scheduled to meet and design with you last week to discuss their sign and nobody showed up. So we didn't review it because we weren't going to waste our time if the applicant wasn't there. But the sign has outdoor gusznik lighting on it. You know, it's got lighting to make it visible. It's not like it's blocked by a gigantic tree. And again, there's a monument sign, so I'm just one of the board, but this isn't making the case for me that we shouldn't do anything to take away from the elements you've put in to try to, try to make this a nice, you know, a nice look.
Well, speaking to the issue of relocation of the tree, I think moving the tree 20 feet away on the other side of the driveway is not that grossly bad that it's going to completely, you know, destroy whatever look we've got. I'm willing, personally willing to approve the relocation of the tree with, hopefully with the assurance that maybe you'll talk to some tenants about.
Those lights in Unibank are on all night?
Apparently, I talked, I talked to people in the area and they said that they are on at night. Now, maybe just one night they didn't turn the lights off.
It's one, it's one thing if, maybe it's business hours, I can almost see that, but just to call attention to yourself all night long, you know, I mean, required, I believe, all the lights to go off when the business was shut.
Right. Well, that's, it would seem like it would be covered by that.
Yeah.
I talked to the president of that bank quite often.
Drive by on your way home.
I mentioned it to him just from, oh, I drove by on the way here. Someone, I can show you the text on my phone, my broker took him. Did you know those lights were going in?
No, it's, it's a mess. Okay.
I think the Starbucks building is really good all the way up at night.
We had guidelines in general that require landscaping within parking lots. And the reason for that is to soften the look of the asphalt wasteland. And that's why there's landscaping required around the building, not off in the periphery, but around the building and within the parking lot. And once you remove that, I think you really, you know, you take away, now you've got the balance of the trees on both sides, so I've made my case. But it's not the same when it's all around the periphery as opposed to what we usually look for is in the parking lot.
I could argue that you're going to soften the western side of the building by where the new location is from Main Street. So I, you know, to me, it's not, not that, that big a deal for that. But that's up to me. So I don't, why don't you guys propose a motion to entertain the approval of the tree location as a minor change? If somebody else cares to do that, if not, then propose, Claire can propose a motion to say that you disapprove the change.
Can I ask before we move that forward? What change? Because it seems like this was foreseeable and now, now it's a conflict and now you're trying to change the plan.
You know, it's, quite frankly, just one of those things that someone should have noticed when, you know, the plans were together. I think originally, the tree was at the corner over there when the landscape designer first did it. And then between the civil engineer and the traffic engineer, they discussed, you know, potential visibility issues around that corner and they decided to move it to the other side because it was still, you know, within the parking lot, so to speak. So they moved it to that side for that. And I just, you know, I don't think anyone ever said. And also, on the site plans, that unit was shown as a big unit, they didn't have it separated into two smaller units. So thinking that, you know, maybe the sign, they thought the sign would have been in the middle and not on, you know, one on each side. So it might, it probably wouldn't have blocked it at that point. So there's a number of things, but, you know, it's probably something someone should have foreseen, but, you know, they just didn't. I mean, you know, as far as, you know, the other issues go, I mean, it's, you know, I do fully understand that, you know, you guys want to see, you know, trees on the interior of the parking lot. You know, I think in a bigger parking lot with his aisles and stuff would end things, I understand that. I think from the Conscom standpoint, I mean, the tree being there versus not being there isn't, I think the big thing that people really liked, at least my recollection of the Conscom meetings, was, you know, there's a lot more green space on the lot now than there was before. Even though we've redeveloped and at its square footage is actually significantly more green space now than there was as well as, you know, drainage treatment and all that. I think that was the big plus. I remember people getting pretty high on it as far as the Conscom link.
Can I throw out a possibility before we get to this point? What would you think of replacing that tree with a different kind of a planting? Like a very tall conical arborvitae or something that will provide the greenness and the softness and won't give the shade, but it would soften the corner.
Well, what someone had mentioned to me was doing something, not necessarily tall and conical, but more of a tree that wouldn't quite grow so high, like a crab apple or something like that, that would max out around six feet.
Wouldn't spray.
You know, yeah, and wouldn't, you know, end up spreading and just taking over the whole front of the building.
Right.
Which, you know, a red maple will eventually do.
Sure.
You know, and again, it's not necessarily now as opposed to five years from now, how big is that tree going to be and are we going to have to be pruning it constantly so, you know, people driving around the building aren't hitting. So I mean, something like that, I think, you know, would be, you know, anything that helps the situation with the signage visibility and storefront visibility is a bonus.
If you went that route, I might suggest that we, you know, table this and you ask the landscape architect just to come up with a different kind of a planting that would still soften that corner and provide some shade and wouldn't get so large. Maybe the problem is not the location, it's the choice of species that's causing your problem.
Yeah, no, that's.
That would be a win-win for everybody.
I spoke with John Cusick, the engineer on the project today, and I think he was the one who mentioned crab apples don't grow that high. So it probably wouldn't block the signage. So it'd probably end up being something like that, that we present.
I'm willing to kind of table it until we get another species or something like that, if that's okay. Given that it's middle winter, you're not going to be doing much with it anyway in the next bit. The only other question I had for you is, I've heard from a lot of people that parking is incredibly tight.
It was at the beginning.
Okay, not so bad now?
We had issues at the beginning where, when Starbucks first opened, mainly because Starbucks had like nine employees in there. But I've been by there seven or eight times in the past month and a half and my real estate burber has gone by seven or eight times in the past month and a half. And when I've been there around, you know, the people who told me at the beginning it was really busy, you know, had given us times and, you know, it was really between 11:00 and 3:00 during the week, that was so busy. So I went down there various times during that period. And, you know, I've counted as high as 14 spots open recently.
2:30 today, I think there was three spots and I didn't go around the back of the building.
Right, yeah, yeah, I mean, it definitely fluctuates. When it got really, really busy and there was, you know, no spots available at times was also when we had a lot of contractors on the site.
Okay.
And we had as many as 12 contractors there at one point.
Okay, so it's, maybe itself correcting too.
Yeah, I did actually have my, my traffic engineer go out there as well. To do counts on a Saturday, because I wasn't going to be anywhere in the area on a Saturday. But he went down there and verified that the numbers were basically, he had predicted in the process as far as, he counted people going into Starbucks, he counted how many cars in the parking lot, how many spaces were open. And it was with, it was almost dead on with his prediction.
Okay, so.
I have one question along those lines, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was there like at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night at Starbucks. And they were getting delivery and the truck was on Lumber Street blocking the whole lane. And I thought their deliveries were supposed to come in to the front and then leave by the backside. And instead, they were just kind of there.
They just stopped at Lumber Street?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I can mention it to the operations people, let's see.
Okay. So, I guess the action items come on back?
Yep.
With the new tree?
We need a motion to table it.
I don't think we need anything. Okay.
I think we're also supposed to talk about the release of the bond.
Okay. I think even with the tree, the bond is fine. Entertain a motion to release the $5,000 for the house.
Is it five or is it 10? It says five. It says five here.
Five. Whatever the bond is.
You're just requesting its release.
Yeah.
Is construction complete?
Oh, yeah.
Except for a tree.
A tree. Second. Clarity.
Motion was to release the bond. And it's been seconded. Further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote? Anyone opposed, anyone who abstained, motion carries. We'll put you on at reasonable time next, whenever.
I can come to the next one. I'll shoot Elaine and you know them all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I would have noticed that.
Okay. We're looking for Jeff in crowd.
Fair Heights?
Fair Heights. Looking for Fair Heights crowd. Doug, come on in.
8:15.
Yeah. Oh!
Yes. My name is Scott Miller. I had submitted a scenic road bylaw permit and...
We forgot to put it on the agenda.
I wanted to get on the agenda, so Mr. Resnick has graciously allowed me to try to talk to you quickly.
Okay.
Possible, did you receive the plans?
No. Why don't we get yours done first?
Sure.
Okay, because this is still 8:15, Scott.
Yeah.
Okay, so before our 8:30, you can go.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Doug Resnick, and I represent the Marino family who lives at Fair Heights. They have an exceptionally large lot with a house that's located close to Fair Heights. And there's substantial acreage in the back, enough for another house lot. Paul, Jeff's dad, still owns the property, but right now, his Jeff's sister lives in the existing house, and Jeff would like to build a house down the back. We've consulted briefly with Ken and Elaine. We understand that there are a few issues, but we also, well, like Dave Markerdon explained this, have some thoughts about how we might get to the, beyond the no dead end rule.
Okay. Try it.
Jeff, go try it.
As Doug stated, we have a 2.7 acre lot. And what we're looking to do is create a private street. What we're naming it right now is Marino Way. It's about 327 feet long and 30 foot wide. We have an existing house on Lot 1. The frontage for this new lot, for Lot 1, would come off of the new road with 163 foot frontage and $48 square feet. The second lot, Lot 2, where Jeff would like to construct a home, would have 150 foot frontage, which is in the RV zone with $61 square feet. We have permission to use town water, town sewer for the lot. We're proposing a variable width, no, a meandering driveway, minimum width of 12 foot with an extended driveway off the back, off the end. We do intend to evaluate drainage. And we have a wetland in the left rear corner of Lot 2. And our intention is to try to keep everything outside the buffer zone so that we don't have to file with conservation. We intend to conform to stone water management. We have good site distance on Fair Heights Road with Marino Way in both directions. And we're looking also to construct a walking path. The location exactly will be determined with your butler, Mr. Palmer, at a later date. But as part of our submission, we proposed that path all the way down to Boston Edison property.
To date, Mr. Chairman, we've spoken to Mr. Palmer. And he, of course, you know, it's premature for him to commit one way or the other. He needs to assess what's possible to do with his own property. And, but, there's a good chance that we'd be able to create a walking trail and maybe something even more substantial. We're just kind of getting, want to get the reading of the board.
Okay.
Doug, is that Palmer property in back?
Yes.
That goes down onto...
Williams Way.
Which they were before us earlier.
And where's the Edison property?
Just beyond the...
It's the little strip.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's the right of way.
Yeah.
Okay. I think at our meeting, we gave you a copy of the board's policy on exceptional circumstances. And Elaine, you got a copy of that again? We have not granted one of these, I don't think, in recent memory. And I don't know whether this is something we want to start with. I mean, other members of the board can feel free to kind of speak in. But basically, this would allow backlot zoning and would open up hundreds of lots in town.
Can't. You know, our main motivation in being here, Mr. Chairman, is the fact that the Marinos have owned this property for a very long time. Jeff's sister lives in the existing house now. Jeff would like to live on the property. And, you know, I know over the years, the board has heard a lot about family subdivisions and that sort of thing. But if it's, if we can't do something along these lines, then, you know, Jeff and perhaps his sister are going to have to leave Hockington. That's something they don't want to do.
Is this case, are there exceptional circumstances?
Well, what we were hoping to, what we were hoping to establish as exceptional circumstances would be a trailway from beyond the cul-de-sac, perhaps through Mr. Palmer's land, through the easement. And I think it's Stone Crossing.
No, it's a small subdivision off of Ash.
Well, Williams Way is Mr. Palmer's.
It's not Stone Crossing.
No, it's...
Trailside lane?
Yes.
Oh, Trailside.
Well, I'll tell you, the exceptional circumstances, I think the last one we granted was a gift of 30 acres of state land to the state, Christian way. You know, we've done it for a lot less, but just to divide a lot into two places just because you've got a bunch of acres, it's not what we've done in a long time.
If I may, I guess, in fairness to, you know, other homeowners in town, just on this land, you know, plan that I'm looking at that shows the different lots and just, you know, seeing a number of lots that are pretty good sized lots. And so then I would see a roadway going in the side and sticking another house in back of, you know, there's just a whole bunch of houses that all of a sudden, you know, you can stick a long driveway in and put another lot in back. I could just see this replicated all over the place.
The town meeting did turn down a few years ago, backlot zoning overwhelmingly. The planning board, about 10 years ago, before I was on it, proposed it, and it got crushed. I mean, not just a little bit, it got crushed.
You know, we're also, I think we're asking the board to recognize that things are a little bit different right now and that the notion of a family subdivision is not that different from, in some cases, from backlot zoning. We were trying to offer something extra to the town. And, you know, there's still a possibility that we may be able to make a connection with another road, but that's way too premature to talk about.
Anyone feel like they want to change your precedent with this? I'm not seeing anyone that's, that we're very, you know, this is beyond what we've done, is documented in the memo for a lot of years. And I think it has a lot of ramifications to...
The memo, of course, is from Larry and dates back to 1996.
Yeah.
Things have changed since then.
There is an attachment that talks about since then.
Since then.
The history since then.
Yeah. Didn't this get litigated too?
Yes.
In the board purveyor, so...
And I'll see some of the list of some of the other circumstances which you've identified as exceptional and...
And I don't find this, I don't find anything in this plan that meets those exceptional, my, meets the exceptional circumstance. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the Pope get to speak on this?
Sure, go ahead.
Can I be first?
Yeah.
I respect everything you guys do, and I know what you're aiming for. And I don't want a house of mine backed out of it. The only thing, if there were exceptional circumstances, is that what we're losing is the people who've been in town for a long period of time. This kid's dad, Paul Marino, bought this house in 1975. I coached all these kids, the brothers and the sisters in soccer, along with my own kids. He works for a local plumber. He wants to stay in town. And it's frustrating for him because on the one hand, he's paying $2,000 a month over wood partners over the apartment building, and he wants to build a house. His kids are going to go to school here anyway. It would just seem to me that there is some advantage to being, you know, more or less a town person. We want to keep these people. We don't want to have them, make them go to Douglas. We don't want to make them go to Oxbridge. And we want to keep them here. So, all I ask the planning board is to think about it. And I, again, I respect what your thing is, but think about the fact that, you know, we've got, you know, 250 new units over here on one side of Western North Street. We've got 200 some odd on the other side. We've got 200 some odd down at the muse. We've got this one kid who wants to build one house behind his dad's house. If there's any extenuating circumstances, the house has been in the same ownership, the front house, since the house was built in 1975.
Forty years.
I would just ask the board to talk about it. I think you can make a circumstance that would fit this situation, which wouldn't fit every other situation. You know, the longevity in town, it's a big thing. It's a big thing for me because I'm getting to the point where I don't have clothes to go to anymore to see anybody I know. So, I don't know anybody anymore, which is kind of frightening for me. I want these kids to be in town so I know their kids. And my grandkids will hang around with them. I, you know, that's what little towns used to be. And I would just hope that you guys would consider this. And I know the spot you're in, but I think you could make enough circumstances that were specific to this. It wouldn't be specific to every new house that comes down the road. Because it is what it is. It used to make a difference if you lived in town, and we're here for a long time. You know, when I was growing up, there was like five names in town. There was, you know, the Diana's and the McIntyre's, and that was it. They all lived in town, and they all built houses around their houses. This kid just wants to do the same thing. And the opportunities for a kid now, as you know, are a few and far between if he wants to stay in town. So, what we're doing is, we're inviting all these other people from out of town. We're giving them all the housing they want. And yeah, 40 years from now, they'll be townies too, I suspect. But the, we're losing a big asset here. And I just hope you think about it.
Mike, I think you ought to know more than anyone else what the precedent we'd be setting. And it's a big one if we go to this type of backlot type zone.
Any of the other neighbors here? Any butlers?
I, yeah, I'm Ed Palmer. I own the 12 acres behind, I mean, eight and a half acres.
And you're on Chestnut Street, Ash Street?
Yeah, I'm the last one.
This house here.
If I can just make a comment to Mike's plea. In the years that I've been on this board, I've heard a lot about family subdivisions, haven't seen too many actually put into use. I understand the reasons for the concept, which is just what Mike spoke about. But I think one of the reasons the boards have not been doing it that much is that operationally, it's quite unenforceable. You cannot put any kind of a restriction that says that this property will always belong to that family. And things, people's circumstances change. We've had people come that had a small child that said they wanted a family subdivision. So, their child, they don't know what that child's going to do. And ones that I've seen that did go in, and then, you know, there's a divorce or something changes, and, you know, eight, 10 years down, they don't even live there anymore. And so, if there were a way that you could assure that this always did what it was designed to do, that would be one thing. But legally, you can't. So, you really do have to look at it like any other development request with the understanding that in all likelihood, over time, that's exactly what it will be.
Mr. Chairman, we recognize that. And through the chair, Claire, the pendulum has swung back and forth on family subdivisions many times over the last 35 years that I've been watching. Now, one of the problems is today, and you are the exception, and Ken's the exception, there are very few people sitting on boards...
All the old people, you're doing the old thing.
Yeah. Hey, I'm just a newcomer. I'm only 37 years here, so... But again, you know, people don't even know the names of the families that accomplished so much of this stuff, that made the town what it is today. And, you know, the Marinos would like to continue in that tradition. We will try and develop something perhaps more substantial. Okay? Thank you.
If I could say this, I think you've worked on my house. I think...
But it leaked.
I think that if this isn't working out, I hope that there'll be other ways to find a home in Hockington, either new or otherwise. Just because this isn't a way, doesn't mean it's not the way, so...
Let's move on to the next agenda. We're running very late again. Okay, so the next one was...
So, my name is Scott Miller, representing Equestrian Building Company. We recently acquired six lots along South Mill Street, three of which, South Mill is a scenic road in town, so pursuant to the scenic road bylaw, we're requesting approval. Three of the lots, house number five, which is Lot 17. I have a bigger plan. There's no trees, three inches or greater within the right of way. The only impact is the first house on the left, house number five, which is Lot 17, and the two houses on the far right, Lots 21 and 22, which are house number 17 and 21. I've submitted pictures to the board.
You got a big stone wall in three spots.
Yes, yes. There's really no stone wall on Lots 21 and 22. There's like maybe four or five rocks still laying there. The rest of the wall that's shown on the plan is completely gone. There is, however... There is, however, a reasonable looking wall on lot 17. What I would propose is to the area that I open up for the driveway, I will have, I use New View, Doug DeWolf in town for all my landscaping and stonework. I would propose to have New View restack the amount of wall that I remove on lot 17 and put it adjacent to the existing wall. The other two areas, again, lots 21 and 22, if you were on site or saw the photos, it's probably four or five rocks laying on the ground.
Board members, does that seem reasonable?
I'm assuming what you're talking about when you say adjacent is you would put them back in the right of way.
Along the lot line, yes.
On the town.
To the existing wall.
Yes, but it needs to be, if it's taken out of the town, stone wall area, it needs to go back into town property so those rocks don't get.
Yeah, exactly. So I mean, it would be adjacent to the existing wall, which is along the right of way.
Yes, in the right of way.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't know. What is the question?
He's asking permission to basically cut three driveways in.
At 17, 15, and 11?
On this plan, it's lot 17, lot 21, and 22. House numbers five, house number 17, and house number 21.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to allow the three driveway openings at lots five, 17, and 21. It's a provision that the excess stones be stacked on lot, what's it, 17?
No, be retained as in the right of way.
Be retained on the right of way, but to augment the existing wall on lot 17.
So just to be clear, the existing wall on lot 17 will belong to who?
It's on the, looks like it's on the border line.
Right on the border of the right, right edge of the right of way.
What I'm getting at is that you want, when you're taking from a stone wall, in a historic stone wall, you don't want it to go onto private property because a private property owner can then later on decide to do whatever. So they have to stay on town. So that's why I'm splitting hairs here about.
No, so you look at this plan right here. Sure.
Yes.
The stone wall is right on the edge of the right of way in the property line. So where it's taken out here, it'll be put right there.
But being on the property line, it is still going to be clearly the town's wall.
That's right.
Not the property owner.
Correct.
That's what I want.
Okay. Entertain a motion? Here a second. Second. Everyone ready for a vote?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How far are this, I know we don't have the paperwork and this came up, whatever, but how, has this gone through the conservation commission and?
Yes.
And it's all been approved?
I have existing order of conditions, yes, for all the lots.
And even though you're within like most of the 100-foot buffer zones of wetlands in three of the buildings, if I'm reading this right?
It has existing order conditions for all six lots.
Not relevant to our decision.
It is relevant in terms of the house is going to be a certain way, the driveway's going to be a certain way.
That's correct.
Doesn't matter where the driveway goes, it's obviously approved in the driveway. Is that, I'm fine?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstained, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're running really late. Let's, Doug, let's, through Leonard Street.
Mr. Chairman, this is a continued public hearing on the petition to chop the road on the public paper street. We have, I think from the beta letter that was circulated today, we have accomplished most of everything that Andy wanted us to do and see. One thing we did do over the course of the last week was move the road over to the east west.
Why don't you show us all what you changed in the last month or last sentence? Yep.
The easement now, the existing catch basin is here.
Yep.
Leonard Street here is at the top of the page. And so what we've done is we've moved the roadway over two and a half feet. So the easement that was there no longer exists. So we moved this roadway over two and a half feet. The berm still exists. We're proposing a berm, same length as previously indicated. We've made the change from the first part of the road up to the first 100-foot. We added a small curve in there. So there's no pavement on private property to the east, Alicia's property.
And you're moving the catch basin?
Yes, we have. The existing catch basin remains. We're proposing a catch basin here with a new manhole and then going into our storm septic, just as we were previously. So we've just shifted this over a little bit, two and a half feet to the right.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you change the tree?
So originally, we were giving Alicia a parcel A. That's no longer the case. Proposing a fence along the rear property defers. That parcel A now has been combined with lot one, it just gets a little bit larger. Street trees, we've added a pear tree as a second, a second tree, alternating our species. So very minor change.
Questions in Beta, you're comfortable with everything now?
Yeah, yeah, a few remaining questions from the last hearing. They satisfy our concerns.
Are the two neighbors here that are affected the most?
I don't see Alicia.
I've been talking to Alicia for the last week or so and she's fine with doing it this way.
I can't speak for him. He's still getting this property and.
Betty.
They are still getting this property.
And you still put in the fence?
No, he's well aware. I mean, I told him what happened and we shifted and everything. Like I said, I can't speak for him, but I think he's fine with it.
He was comfortable with the pavement on his land at part of his driveway.
Nothing really changed on his, this area, just this road shifted a little bit.
Question in terms of, are the three sites also going to still be well or are they going to be?
Well.
They're all the well, so there's no change on that.
No change on that. There were three changes, the road with the catch basins, the trees, and I think we took off the subdivision stamp.
Off the fence. Yeah.
Why are you taking off the fence?
Because Alicia didn't, that was part of our discussions with Alicia. She was just, just as happy to leave it be.
We were on the sidewalk and I heard fence. I heard this neighbor here asked for stormwater management, some kind of berm in front of their property.
This neighbor here?
Yes. And I heard these neighbors, they're getting the garage.
Right.
And I'm concerned, I have a question, what is the safety status of the garage? Do, who actually owns it right now?
I own it.
Right, okay.
He was at the last meeting, was happy with everything. You expressed that. I can tell you what I have with him, so long as he supports it, doesn't oppose this, he's going to get the garage, I have to clean it out, I have to pour the floor, and I have to, there's some trees there.
Also, you're making a new?
I'm going to clean the whole garage off for him, pour the floor. He gets the garage. I think he's very happy, but again, I can't speak for him. As far as the safety concern, it's solid. I mean, the roof's not leaking, but it's an old building. I mean, it's brick, it's block, you know, the windows are gone. There's a couple little old buildings here I'm going to knock down also.
Okay, he's not here, so I can't speak for him either.
I can't either, but I'm.
I've asked, I've heard some questions about, one that happens in the order of things, and there were some concerns about it and.
The order of things with him, I was going to keep this up no longer than a year because I wanted to use this electricity there.
Oh, okay.
Rather than bringing a temporary service.
I wasn't aware of that.
The deal I have with him is I'm going to keep this for no more than, I may finish in less than a year, or I may have power and may not heat it, but that's.
It's part of the work site until next time.
Right, correct.
So this neighbor here facing, now this is kind of shifting the way the street is coming, but I know they, she had concerns.
You're shifting it over, what, two or three feet?
Uh huh.
Two and a half.
So she has some concerns, is she not here? I'm asking for the mayor's then.
Yeah.
Trent's here.
Okay, you have some concerns about the stormwater coming down the street and you wanted, your wife said you wanted a berm in front of your house? Or some, something that kind of managed the water?
I only made a comment about the water.
Maybe there's a woman next to you.
This is water protection. I don't, I don't remember.
I don't remember that either, but whatever.
No, 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 it wasn't Betty.
Well, there's nobody, okay, whatever.
Not here.
I'm saying there's nobody here. That's, this is why.
Okay.
And we're catching a lot of water.
There's an old woman, I might have misunderstood where she lived and don't remember her name.
Okay. We will.
Do you open this? This is a public hearing?
Yeah, yeah, this is a public hearing. I guess I'm going to open up, any questions and comments on the changes that we had today? We started off that way. Yes, go ahead.
About the hook setting up for the street. I think this is relating to the changes. What I was hoping to hear was, because we've gone, this conversation has gone back and forth since the initial layer, I think it listed like 13 or something noncompliant items. So I was hoping to get a revised list of what the noncompliant items are now and how many are there.
There aren't any.
No, I don't think we have any waivers required from.
So does that mean from the original plans that were submitted like a month or two or three months ago?
Yes.
Do all of those noncompliant items are now compliant?
They conform to our engineering rules and that's when I asked the representative from Beta that, you know, they've, engineering wise, they've engineered it to the point where the town's consultant believes it will work as designed.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through the chair, the letter we received from Beta today, which is dated January 11th, I think.
We got it today, too.
Yes, said all the comments were closed and that everything else meets proper standards, including the changes.
We got rid of Easy Street, if I remember.
Well, we're getting rid of Easy Street.
It's gone. We don't have a name for it yet. The select, we do not have a list in here.
How about just Leonard Court? It's so little, there's so few.
No, no, the Leonard Court and Leonard Street will confuse, confuse, the firemen don't like that.
We had a couple of names, Claire, that might work and we'll go to the select, see what they like and.
It's not our pervert.
I did search some of the history in that area, try to find some, but they're all taken, like Phipps and Clive.
Well, no, actually, they've found a couple.
We're seriously behind where we are.
We'll follow through with that.
Okay. Other public comment on this street? Yes, sir. We got you at the end of the last time, so you don't have to repeat what you did.
No, I won't repeat at all. I just had two other thoughts. Generally speaking, our neighborhood on 75 Grove Street, Ted Barker Hook, traffic is building and building and building in our neighborhood. It backs up from Main Street and adding another six to nine cars immediately in our neighborhood scares me beyond the traffic concerns I mentioned last time. The other thought I had was according to my checks, last week, we heard 14 times that things should be okay. It ought to be enough. It's within the minimum requirement. It's a little less that I'd be comfortable with, but I think we can get by those kind of comments. According to my check, we heard 14 times at the last meeting. And the one time Mr. Barbieri had a chance to give to the town, he decided it wasn't in his business model to help with the water issues. And yet we're going to, it feels like, move forward with all these should be's, ought to be, well, it's kind of cutting it close, but we think it's going to be okay. So my question is, I don't understand what the town is getting out of this, but we're going to allow a businessman, because it doesn't fit his business model, to give very little back to the town in exchange for should be, ought to be, could be, within the minimum, I prefer a different material, but this ought to be okay.
Okay, let me answer that. What we're giving the town is allowing the developer, the property owner, to develop this property within his property rights. And it's not that the town is excited about building another dead-end street. We don't like that at all. However, town council determination is that the applicant has the right to develop the paper street due to historic access and provide debt. Council, and this is not the only, first time we've had one of these type of streets before us, recommends that the board apply the current subdivision regulations to the greatest extent practical, given the historic layout and the pre-existing development on the road. And that's, that's what we're stuck doing. It's not that this board, probably if you took a poll, doesn't want to add three more lots. The amount of traffic, it's, it is what it is. I mean, it got laid out in the 1800s and we're stuck with it. And whether we like it or not, we're stuck with it. And, you know, if we said no, we'd get sued and we'd lose and, you know, we'd spend more money than we're at. That's, that's the problem that I'll say this board has. Are we going to, I don't know whether we're going to vote for it. I assume we probably would based on knowledge of these members of the board, but I'm not saying we have a lot of choice, but we can either spend our time in court on something we're going to win or lose. And quite frankly, from an engineering standpoint, our engineers said that it meets the requirement. Now, this is the water thing. I personally intervened with the DPW director since our last meeting, tried to get him to figure out a way to make the water work, and I think they're about $12,000 apart some way or how. And quite frankly, it's an impasse as far as this board has authority to do anything about, unfortunately. Because I think for $12,000, it'd be a win-win situation. But that's where, where it's at. I don't know. I don't know how else to say it, and I know it isn't the news that you want to hear.
No, 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 I understand. And Mr. Chairman, you know much more about what's going on than I.
If I could.
My only thought is the greatest extent practicable, balanced with all these ought to be's, could be's, should be's.
Sure.
That's where I feel like there might be some room.
Well, from the greatest, the greatest, we've gotten a clean bill of health at this point from our consulting engineer. So the engineers have solved the technical problems.
Okay.
And, you know.
If I could also respond, I mean, I had worked with the town. I hope Mr. Westling told you that I was more than generous in that offer, number one. Number two, you were trying to put a little easement to the school. I was very willing to do that. Number three, I don't know, a few people will have it, but they're already drawing a cross-country track on my property, which I'll be willing to give to them. I work with the town.
Yeah, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, this is not like a cram it in. This is there are legal rights which town council agreed that we have. And I think we approached this, yes, sir, and we approached this with all due respect.
And I would add that at the beginning of the discussion, probably one of the biggest givebacks that Mr. Barbieri was willing to try to give to the town or do with the town was some cooperation with the school department on that other parcel, whether it was bus parking or something, and the school department was absolutely not interested. So, you know.
I did, I did talk to the school superintendent and that there's still the position that they would prefer not to be involved. Mr. Goldman.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, through you, Mr. Barbieri's property meets the Senate Trail. And at the Senate Trail, over the years, there has been serious runoff issues from this property onto Senate Trail. And at times, it tends to wash it out and cause problems along Senate Trail in the conservation district area. We're wondering if there's any way to get some kind of mitigation on the end of where this particular property meets Senate Trail.
I mean, he's not, he's not developing for hundreds of feet away from there.
The open space parcel during storm events, there's serious runoff from the property down by Senate Trail. It'll butt Senate Trail.
No, I'm walking, I just can't figure out where it is that it comes in.
Where you, where there's an open space, if you're walking from the Loop Road and you come to the open space, there's an open slot.
The field?
Side trail, there's a field.
Yeah.
That's his field.
Yeah.
That's his field.
Oh, okay.
No, it's not.
No.
No, it's not.
I walk it all the time.
Ken, if I can speak to it. Peter Legoy. Um, I did a lot of the work in the Senate Trail, where Mr. Barbieri's property is, is further towards the Loop Road. Um, if you're coming from the Loop Road in the Senate Trail, that first bridge is sort of the end of the town property that he owns for another couple hundred, what is it, two, three hundred feet, Dave?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and that area is not an issue that, that area that we've had a major issue on.
Never mind, okay.
I was under the impression that.
No, I think at the bottom of this, there's also a concrete structure that goes underneath the path.
So I don't think it goes under the, goes across the path, I think it goes under the
path.
Okay.
But not at that point.
Not at that point.
Okay. Other comments, questions before we, we, yes, go ahead.
Um, so I'm wondering, during the walkthrough, Mr. Barbieri said that he didn't intend to build more than three houses. And then at the last meeting, I know that he also said it was not his intention to develop further, because we talked about the potential of buying Mr. Terry's land and developing more there, which sounded like it would be very difficult, and yet there was a little bit of an opening there. So I'm wondering, is there a way to at least reflect in the minutes that it is not his intention to build more?
We can reflect that in it, but, but the practical part is, is that we have not created any more fundage than you need to.
Correct. Let me be very clear. My land I'm building three lots on. If Tom Terry decides to do something, I don't know his rights as far as tying it in and all that, but I have three conforming zoning, square footage, four hundred lots on my road.
No, I understand that.
And, I mean, I'm not saying it's going to happen, not going to happen. I'm very sorry. It's almost impossible, but somebody could do something new.
Well, he's, Mr. Terry's got the, the problem of extension of dead ends without a second in and out, which is why we originally said no to this until town council said, sorry, it's an existing road. Otherwise, we'd be talking about something completely different.
Mr. Chairman, in Elaine's memo today, there was discussion of a, um, performance guarantee.
Yeah, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
That's coming next on the list. Is there other public comment? Okay. Go ahead.
Ken Parker, sixty nine Clint Street. There is a question here about potential easements for the cross-country, is that to be decided at this point or at a later time? Or how does that work?
No, that's a se, that's a separate, not part of the, the deal with the planning board tonight.
No, we saw it on the plan over the weekend.
I actually brought that to Elaine's attention before the first meeting. I said, there was somebody, they contacted me about doing that about six or nine months ago, and I said, come to the planning board, we can work it through it. Never heard from them again. Then they told me that it was drawn on the plan over the weekend, it was in the news.
For the cross-country.
Tim Kildoff is doing something with, with that cross-country. I just think I saw it on Hot News. Yeah. Okay, let's, uh, let's talk at this point about the performance guarantee.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I have a couple more questions of this, of this, at this part I'd like to talk to you about. And one question is from Dr. Parker, who's the chair of the overall upper trails, trails committee. We were talking about still having the accessway from the school parking lot where it is now through, through the paper street.
No.
Um, why, why is that a no?
The school, the school doesn't want it.
The school, I, the school hasn't said no to me, and I was talking to the chair, we haven't gone into great detail about it, but the walkway is there now, why would it be removed?
The what's there now?
The walkway is there now.
What walkway? There's no walkway through this property.
There, there's a, there's a walkway that's actively used by people living in the neighborhood.
People are walking through a field.
Might be cutting through something, but there's no path there. What I had said, I'll, I'll still live by my.
Well, Pat, you said no path there, it's paper street, it's been there since eighteen hundred.
No, 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 it ends there.
Ends at the.
Here's the school property.
But I'm still.
Next question.
Okay, my question is actually for Dr. Parker. Would you think this is a useful, uh, accessway for, for the overall trail system in town?
No.
I don't think I have any jurisdiction over that.
Not jurisdiction, this is your opinion as a trails person.
I'm always in favor of there being more access everywhere, just as, just a general.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of access at, uh, a trail that goes right through somebody's side yard in, in a house, quite frankly.
Well, they're building next to a school and there's a parking lot there.
We've been there, Frank, we spent months on this, through the chair.
Well, I, I'm.
Next.
I'm against it if they're going to collude that. My next question is, this doesn't show that, didn't you?
Well, wait, wait, let me, so, I, I don't want you to be against something for no reason. I'm trying to tell you, as I told the whole.
The very valid reason, I feel.
That I was very happy to let the school put a second.
Yep, I know you have.
Everybody said they don't want it. I don't want you to say.
I want it.
I know, but I don't want you to know, I vote because it's something that nobody wants, I mean, I don't want to do something I want.
Based on your new drawing from today. Did, did you know from today with the colors and everything? Where, where is our, uh, circle?
It's not here.
It's a not circle, okay. No, I got it, it's just going to fit that one, it's in here, okay, good. Uh, I'd still like to see a fence to give neighbors privacy from, uh, the building and construction, and I don't understand why that's.
We had discussed it, it was a two-way street, Alicia decided she didn't really want to do anything, so we decided that, um, we're not going to do the fence.
It's different from the way I'm hearing it, I just, I have no understanding why the fence is being removed.
Which fence?
The fence.
I think it was never.
Yes. There was a fence here, Frank. Right.
All right, I, I can speak to that, okay. We had a handshake deal, and she was going to get this piece of property to grant me the easement, et cetera, et cetera. I met with one of her people, and then she called me back, says, is there any way to get a six-foot stockade fence with it? I said, sure, fine, okay. She came to the hearing the last time, everything was fine. She had the easement, which was a one-page swap. Uh, she supposedly hired an attorney, although we never heard an attorney's name. It just stumbled along to a point that it was very unfeasible for me to make that transfer with her.
Excuse me, through the chair.
What does the fence have to do with that?
Excuse me. It was a deal. It was a deal. That didn't happen.
I thought, when I heard the fence.
Mr. Chairman.
Let him speak.
Alicia advised me that she is planning to sell the property in the not-too-distant future. She felt it was in her best interest for the value of the property not to change things. So that was great, we had a nice discussion, it didn't work out.
We might hear it different ways, but I heard the fence at the last meeting and it had, didn't have anything to do with that, so.
That's the only fence that we had ever proposed, was the one that I made the deal with her on, was never any other fences proposed.
But, okay, you're not giving her the extra land.
Frank, let's, let's try.
Move on to purity, because I don't.
We're running out of time.
If we're running out of time, then it takes the time it takes. You, you're, you're offering space and now she doesn't want it, whatever, so I don't understand why it still can't be a fence.
She can put a fence up.
All right, so you.
Well, that was part of my deal to her for compensation for her giving me that. I had to move this, redesign it, pay all that money, now I got to put them in home and catch basements. I would have loved to have shaken hands and given it that way.
Right, because I, I've, I've heard some of that, but I haven't heard from them, I heard some of that, but not.
They were here at the last meeting.
Not the shifting part from that. This is the first I've seen of the shifting.
Right, absolutely.
So I, I would like to hear from them, so I, I don't know if I could vote today, no matter which one. Um, and then one last question to Mr. Meyer, I, I'm sure, if he's still here.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're sure you're okay with that? You, you weren't the people that were saying that you were worried?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no. I don't, I'm not saying I'm okay with it.
If I may interject, Mr. Chairman, um, with all respect, I understand Mr. Durst's concerns about neighbors, but, um, if the applicant's legal counsel, he's bound by the law and he's bound by honesty and he's bound by his word, is saying that he spoke with the abutter and the abutter doesn't want the fence, um, I ha, I have to assume that the lawyer in front of us is, is telling us the truth about what the abutter said. And if the abutter said that, far be it for this board to impose something on an abutter who told Attorney Resnick he didn't want it. I just think that's, that's a settled issue regardless of what.
Yeah, we were talking and emailing all week, Mr. Chairman, she, uh, Alicia went up for the long weekend skiing, she actually had a little bit of an accident, cracked her rib, and, or three, and, um, you know, this evolved throughout the week.
Have fun. Your court. Tell me some. You're right.
Any more questions?
If I may, from what I've heard, she didn't want the extra land because it was a, it's needed for stormwater management, so she wouldn't be able to use it. Is that, is that what we're looking at?
She could use it, it does have a small swell, I bet she could have used it.
No, but she mentioned that, that made her less interested in getting the land.
So my understanding from last meeting was that you guys were putting a fence up, and now I'm hearing that it's between you and her, and now neither of these neighbors are here, and these things are changing, I would like to hear from the neighbors more precisely because I'm hearing different things than you're saying, not to say that you're not saying.
Through, through the chair, don't you think they'd be here if they were objecting?
You just said she was injured.
She came home, she's home now, she was injured last weekend, she couldn't drive because her ribs hurt.
Today's Monday. I'm saying, here's what I'm saying, I don't think, I, I have enough information to vote.
Okay.
I don't think none of us do unless we hear from the neighbors, who aren't here, which they should be.
They aren't here. Let's talk about performance guarantee.
Mr. Chairman, basically, the two suggestions that Elaine had, one was to subject ourselves to a covenant, this is not a subdivision, we prefer not to do that, we're totally willing to establish a performance guarantee prior to obtaining any building permits, which was choice number two.
And, and we would set that at the time you're requesting a lot release?
No, we're not going to have a covenant, so there's not going to be a lot release. We would, we would, again, have the evaluation done of what remains to be done on the roadway, just like in a typical situation, and then we would have to post that performance guarantee prior to obtaining building permits for lots, which is essentially, essentially what the release of the covenant accomplishes. You can get building permits.
You'd say no building permits until you've set the bond.
But we're, we're happy to do that voluntarily. It's a great suggestion.
Okay, so basically the condition would be no building permits until lots, uh, until a performance covenant has been set.
If you understand.
And received, okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Can we also just, I know there's been an issue since we started, I just have a tally of who's able to vote.
Everybody but Frank Seville, I think.
Yeah, everybody except Frank Seville.
So Frank, you haven't seen the tape?
There's two meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's me, John, Claire, Frank, Fran, and Matt.
Okay.
So that is how many of us?
Six out of.
Six. One, two, three, four, five, six. And we're going to need a five-vote majority vote. Okay. Do you look at all the conditions we had with this in Elaine's memo?
Yes, sure, they were all appropriate and fair and.
Entertain a motion to approve it with the understanding that condition A is, is the performance guarantee that before any building permits are issued, a receipt of the performance guarantee based on work that needs to be done on the street. For to approve the design and construction plans for the paper street with the following conditions, A through N, as put in Elaine's memo, four pages, four and five.
The property's over here on the table.
And, oh, is there a, would we require a performance guarantee, or, I mean, bond or something like that?
That, that, that's just what we discussed.
The forms of the guarantee are.
What about, what about a cleanage or clean, cleanup or things that need to be done, like we do normally on site plan?
It'd be part of the bond, I would imagine.
Yeah, okay.
Clean and catch bases.
Sure. I think what the condition stated is that the town's engineer would establish the amount of the bond after the base coat was on and.
So it'd be the typical.
Yeah, typical situation, remaining work to be done.
Okay.
Other question.
Yeah.
Could you put a condition in there to remedy the, the water situation, getting town water for those units as opposed to the well?
I am not sure we can do that because we can't, we don't have the authority to require or give town water permit. I, I wish we could.
It was just a question, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, it's.
Can I add on to that question?
Yeah.
Could we bump the question to Boris Lekin, where we could get something done on the street for the rest of the neighbors while this construction is happening, why not have some deal? I mean, they can make a deal for parking for more money than this, than the difference we're talking about. And then he's happy, neighbors are happy, and everyone gets, uh, their construction out of the way all in one, one fell swoop. We can ask, is what I'm saying.
We, we've already asked and it's been answered.
I, I can't see tying somebody's development to a discussion with the selectman. We could have that discussion if we wish.
When we were on the sidewalk, we, we heard that Mr. Barbieri was communicating with them. Last meeting we just discussed, like, well, how come we don't really get the responses we get from, we need from other departments? And then Ken reached out, got some, got some answers, but we really don't have the full answer yet, so we need to.
No, we have the full answer is that the deal can't be made.
Yeah, okay, we, we had to, right.
That's the answer. From, from the other side and from him tonight.
That's corrected, I'm corrected, sorry.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, can we bump this up to the board selectmen and say, can we ask them to direct, uh, our town to look at this as a whole? Because we have the water department, we have DPW, and, uh, we have a private builder who's building a street, and we have neighbors that have a need, and we have this developer that has a need.
The DPW director's looked at all that, and he's twelve thousand dollars short from where he's got to be to, to make it happen. That's what I heard. And probably the water rate payers will pay a lot of money in a year to increase the water main on Leonard Street when all these neighbors put the right amount of political pressure on the water commissioners or introduce a citizens petition at town meeting to, to, to solve an, an obvious problem.
I just think it's a shame that.
It may be a shame, but it's, we're, we, we don't have the authority, in my opinion, in Elaine, to, to, to do water, you know, and we, you can't stop it because you don't have town water, because they have their right to, to property order to, to take well.
We do have the authority to, to ask.
We've already asked, it's asked and answered.
But the board selectmen, we, we haven't done that.
It's not our job to take it all the way up. I mean, they, 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 they're the ultimate authority because they are water commissioners for the town, but the DPW guy says he can't find it in his budget to do it. I think he might need some town meeting help with that, but that's.
When is construction start?
Uh, soon, I hope. If you guys vote tonight.
Okay. So, did we get a motion yet, Soby?
Second.
Moved in second. And this is the, the motion to approve the design and construction plans for the paper street with conditions A through N.
Can I have a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
So I am going to vote yes for this, begrudgingly. Because of the water thing, I think there's safety issues. So I do applaud all of the butters that came out and brought their comments forth. Our hands are somewhat tied on this one. But you can tell by the angst and the discussion here, nobody on the, I can only speak for myself, do not feel very good about having to vote for this particular motion. I understand the downside of it. I understand what could be, but I'm just kind of laying it out there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a discussion point. I'd like to add two amendments to the conditions. One is we add an easement for an emergency access walkway to the school property. And the second, we add a fence between the property, that property.
Why don't we take them up separately? If you want to try to make a motion, if you get a second, then, then we'll consider it.
A motion that we include as a condition, emergency access walkway between the school property and the two buildings on the end of this project.
If I may, how can we make a condition when the school department has refused? You can't put this requirement on the applicant when the school department will not allow it. You can't condition something that isn't, isn't doable.
And I also think we heard testimony of other neighbors that are worried about more people walking through there on particularly football game days and whatever, and making the neighborhood less desirable from that, secure from that aspect. I, I think it's not a, a really good idea to create a foot pathway through this, this area. But do I hear a second for his motion? Okay. Go on to your second one.
My second condition is that we do keep the fence that we talked about at the last meeting.
On the, on the south edge of the shamble property.
As, as a property, as a property is not being transferred, put the fence between the two properties.
Do I hear a second? Okay, I think we're-
I'd ask.
Yeah, okay. I think we're back to the original motion. Further discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, I think we're ready for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All those abstained?
I'm abstaining.
Yeah, he, he's abstained, because he can't vote, you know, one extension. So it's, what, five to?
Zero to one.
Zero to one. Okay. A motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you don't want to, I would put it in.
Well, I'm on the board. I took off in 25,000. My wells are 5,000 each. How much, you know, how much can I get? Okay, folks.
Okay.
Today was my correct.
Happy birthday.
Thursday, nine.
Listen, Brian.
Brian. Brian's eight.
I guess you're up, Roy, if you want to be.
Oh, yeah, we'll stay till midnight.
We aren't.
We're west to Waltham City Council at 4:30 in the morning. Start at eight.
Most good government doesn't cover after 10 o'clock, including town meeting. Okay, while they're setting, while they're setting up, let me take a couple other items of business. Master plan update. Those who still have outstanding sections, let's get them done. We've got to, got to get that done. Under the correspondence area. Elaine, you want to talk about 203 Palm Street, just really briefly, what they're setting up?
I can just distribute the letter that I sent to them.
Basically, 203 Palm Street. Even though the developer has a covenant that is registered with Land Court, he went off and sold one lot without release.
Oh, really?
So, I mean, that's kind of disturbing, I guess is a nice way to put it. I can't, I cannot believe that we pulled that off. You got a lot of money for it, too.
Really?
Yeah. Okay. What I would suggest today, because we don't have, I'm sorry, apologize, that we ran over a couple of items, and the chairman wasn't able to control the schedule so well. That we do not open the public hearing for the proposed adjustment to the master plan build area today, that we defer that, because we're not going to talk about it anyway, and that would potentially keep Mr. Karp more in the running, because he is, we are missing one member that, you know, you're, you're getting down to, you're at eight, you know, you could get down to seven, and that needs a sixth vote. So we don't want to open that particular portion, but we'll just, and, and it's your option whether you want to continue with the, with the public hearing, but we are missing one person. Brian is very reliable. He will watch the tape. And this is only his first absence, so, but.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yeah.
So can you explain to me who is missing, and, and your expectation is that the member who's missing will watch the tape and will-
Brian, Brian, Brian Karp is, is pretty reliable, and he will watch the tape. So.
Okay.
So anyway, we will open the continued public hearing for the site plan review portion only for the Osmond, for the north, northeast, northwest, and north suburbages at Legacy Farms. This consists of 425 housing units. Okay. We are following our outline, and I think the first item that we were kind of half in the middle of the last time was the importance of trail connections, restricted parking amenities. How does it fit with the overall master plan special permit overview? And I believe in your package today, you got a plan with some colors on it. It shows where the trails were, and where their changes are going to be made. Somewhere.
There was one mail out to you that had the blue.
Yeah, this, this is the, yep. Nope, it's the wrong one, wrong one. That's what I saw. Here it is.
It looks like-
Nope.
Yeah, we got that one. Not that one.
It's this one, it's this one.
It is that one.
It is that one. It is. It's got a lot of blue.
But I thought it was in color, we can only frame it eight half by 11, so.
Okay.
I think so.
So we do have an 11 by 17 copy-
Great.
-that we can distribute if it pleased the board, if you don't mind, John?
We do our best to kill as many trees as possible on this.
We'll try not to.
That's why the smaller papers.
So that's on page six of the, of this package.
Make it easier to read this.
Page number nine.
So, if I read the legend. Ken, you got one?
Yeah.
Okay. The blue, the blue ones are the lines that were in the master plan. And then there are some red where we're going to take it out. And then where there's some green, where we're going to-
Add it.
Add it, I guess. Is that, is that the best way to describe that?
Yeah, yeah. So essentially, by purpose of, of this plan, what we wanted to do was show what was previously provided to the, to the board by way of, by way of trails, and that, that is blue. And then, obviously, where the development has shifted a little bit, we show the, the red line there, essentially, where there's a little bit of an impact there. So we show those trails that are being essentially modified, because they don't really make, make sense with the development. And then we show in green where we thought additional connection points made sense to connect the development into the, the trail network. So for, for instance, down in this area over here, made sense to, you know, connect, make a connection up to Phip Street over here, and to bring this trail network into that intersection right there. So we could not only, really, we could bring the, the trail network into the, you know, the neighborhood. And essentially, back in this area as well, we just showed some of the, the movements around that back, that back area, that connection right through here, which we thought would make sense to connect to this, this road.
And I can point that out on the larger plan. I just don't want to laser point Elaine right in the eye. Sorry. So, the blue trails that John is referring to are shown here. Those were part of the original master plan special permit trail network. And where you see these red lines are where there were trails proposed as part of that plan, but we've just pushed them out slightly to accommodate the new curve of the road and, and fit in with the development. And then we're proposing some additional connections in green that connect up areas at the perimeter into our trail network at the perimeter of the site, so that it is internally connected and, and externally connected as well.
Go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, two things. Trails, just so mentally I can kind of get my arms around it. Is it two feet wide? Is it just dirt? Is it like stone dust on it? So that's the first question. The second question is, where they come to the streets? Is there a, a post there that identifies it as a trail? Yeah.
If you know my-
Sure, yeah.
Like we've started to do on the south side, there will be a four by four post with a sign that says trail. And then we have these little tags that trails use with a little arrow on them. Those would be placed if you go through various trees to direct you, it's going this way, it's going that way. And we started clearing trails where they meander, and it's on the natural soil. They could be anywhere from four to six feet wide. They're not two feet.
Thanks. That's just helpful and mentally.
Okay, let's, let's kind of go through each segments of, of these. And maybe you start at one side of the plan, and let's just kind of talk about it. The one trail over here skirts, goes from Reservoir View Road, basically, across an open field.
Up in this corner over here, I think.
Right there.
Right there, Ken. Yeah, that's helpful. Okay.
I'm going to go kind of clockwise, starting at that one.
Okay. That's going to be close to a, an area that's going to be developed later.
Correct.
So, so can, a lot of those trails, like that specific one you just spoke about, that's well outside the villages that-
Right.
Pulte is proposing. And I, and I would imagine that when Roy comes in with his future age-restricted development, that the trails in the general vicinity of that, of, of those homes would, would be amended or worked with, with this development at that time.
But I'm, I'm trying to get a, the big picture of trails at this point.
That's right.
And, and quite frankly, there's a couple of things I'm going to ask you as we get around here.
Sure.
To try to make the picture a little bit better. Now, if I go to the next one here, which, and that, that first one is unchanged from the master plan special permit. It's all in blue. And that's the second one in here, which has got the little hiking signal on it, which is this section in here, which is through the age-restricted area. Where, what does that terminate at, at the end there? You know, you got it on the map here, and it kind of terminates. Does it, does it go to someplace? Or is that the one that goes off to the lake? What?
The state park is on the other side.
It's a connection of the state park.
And so there is, there is a state park trail there that that connects to?
There's a trail there, but the state park way on the other side.
But, but that, that, that is on the boundary with the state park? The, the next two roads that have a little hiking signs?
It gets steep there, and it goes downhill, and it's a, I think there's a metal fence still. And so probably right around that point, you couldn't really go to the state park, because it gets too steep, I'm not sure.
I have a much larger plan back at the office that shows all this. This here unfortunately stops at the property line. We have logic early version that shows you where.
Can we use an action item for, for this item, to see how, in context of?
I'll bring that next time.
Okay. Now, if I go around to the top of the, which is north, northeast village? Right into this here.
Chestnut Street, yeah.
Chestnut Street, which, obviously, it's not going to be Chestnut Street very long, because we already have one of those in town.
Besides, the chestnuts have all dead.
In that area, I see a connection, and this is on the future road into the senior housing area. So that's kind of a green, which allows people from that area to get onto the trail. And I can see where the red kind of, obviously, goes through people's backyard, so you kind of routed it around.
Correct.
You're kind of traveling the gas pipeline easement, or on one side of it, maybe, or on it. But then, when I carry it around a little bit, oh, I see there's a trail crossing in green right here, where this guy's loop basically goes through houses that are 20 feet apart.
Well, we can add mark, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, we, when we looked at addressing the planning board's comments from the last meeting, we realized that we wanted to put the connections back on up in this northeast village that were previously anticipated. And so, and then we wanted to give a connection from our neighborhood into those, into the trail system. We didn't have one previously. So, we're showing it where the grading best allows, where that green connection is. But in a, in a revised plan set that we're going to submit to the planning board, that when we make a bunch of different planning adjustments that we're, we've been talking about, we're going, we'll, we'll open up more room there, and we'll, and we'll designate a more of a trail, so there'll be a post, like Roy said, and then, you know, we'll probably do some screening, some type of evergreens to, to delineate the path through the homes.
Okay.
So that's the conceptual location, but we'll, we'll fine tune that as we space those zones out.
At this point, for members of the planning board, because we have so many discussion items going on, I'm not encouraging them to make every damn change on a, you know, you know, we'll, we'll go nuts with mountains of paper. But conceptually, I think, and I want consensus of the board, I think we like what you hear about opening it up, moving, shifting the houses around a little bit, so that, you know, there is a trail connection to that loop, and I think that's kind of key.
That's right there.
Yep.
And I think there's a trail around this open space in, in, in-
Speaking over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's a current, this is, this is holtland right here.
Right.
And there's currently a trail that goes around-
Sure.
That, that development. And with access actually out that way, and towards the state park that way. On old, on old trails.
So basically, that's got to pick up that trail somewhere.
Right, and we're, we're showing those connections at the property line?
This way, I'm kind of surprised that you don't have a marked trail going in. I mean, so there's currently an existing trail that comes into, there's like a wall here. I would expect that you might want a trail going into, into here from there. And then you could get on the holt property, get around to this part over here.
But isn't that Ashland?
No.
It's close to, it's close to Ashland.
Farn Ridge is Hopkinton. Deer Ridge might be, is Deer Ridge Hopkinton, or?
Yeah, this, this, Deer Ridge, but I think this is, this is Hopkinton here.
I know, I, I know I've walked that trail right here.
The town line.
Yeah, you can probably, you can probably draw the town line if you, you see where the solid lines end. You can probably draw a line right along there, and that's probably the town line. Okay, so, so kind of connections into Farn Ridge. And maybe-
We can look for that connection.
You know, it, it might be nice also, this, you had this red that was down here near this area. If it connects in here, then, then you're off the road. I mean, you get here to the road to get to the state park, but maybe, maybe you go through the woods to get to the state park.
That'd be a hiking problem.
There's a wetland here.
Okay, so it's, it's pretty, we might not get through there. Okay, so it's, it's pretty, we might not get through there.
What we're, you know, what we're proposing is that you could use the sidewalk that connects through the neighborhoods, but at this, there's a bit of a pinch point to the development right there, where this wetland is close by the backs of those homes, so to slip a path behind there, you'd be in the, if I'm not mistaken, you'd be in that buffer area.
That is correct.
Is some of the houses in the 100-foot buffer there?
There's two corners of the, of the homes are within the, within the 100-foot buffer. That's the only, the only part within the development that's in there by way of homes.
I think you're gonna, might have a little trouble with those, but that's...
We did meet with the commissioner earlier tonight, and we reviewed the reports.
Were they happy with that?
They, they seemed okay. They, they were happy that with all of these homes and with all of the development that
Only two?
There was only, there was only two homes that were in there.
Okay.
Jurisdiction.
Obviously with the pinch point, we're not gonna get, is, is that wetlands, a wetland that one would like to see, or is that wetland like a swamp?
Kind of a stream kind of wetlands, still, Roy.
Say again?
The section that they're pointing out is kind of a stream area, from what I remember.
I don't know, it looks like a circle.
[inaudible].
Yeah, I'm not sure it's intermittent, it looks more like a, more like a circular area, yeah.
Wooded, wooded wetland.
Yeah, it, it shows up better on page one, 'cause the aerial is behind the, the
Are there any horse, horse paths from the east? Do people like travel the gas pipeline on the, on horses? Should we then try to accommodate that into the trail area from the east? I know the cross street folks are big onto the horse stuff.
Well, the nice, the nice thing about that is the gas company keeps that pretty well maintained.
Yeah.
So you can literally ride the whole length of that gas main, all the way down to East
What's, what's this little J device?
That is the tot lot area, that's just the pathway around the tot lot. We've actually, we're looking at connecting that pathway, so it won't be a J, it'll actually connect both ends up to the sidewalk area here.
It'll be a U.
It'll be a U, that's gonna...
Does that go across the gas easement?
It does.
Just the pathway, the tot lot is not across the gas easement.
And then going around, I can see where you've taken the one piece out, but probably this other green connection can substitute for that. I think we got a letter talking about Phipps's connection, that looks like that's doable.
Yep, that's shown right here.
Okay.
Oh, listen, just going out, [inaudible] to the south.
I think it goes over Rogers.
Just go right to here.
Goes into Rogers.
[inaudible].
Which, which one are we talking about now? This one?
Uh, no, right here.
That goes into the edge of Phipps.
Right.
That I understand.
Which one were you referring to, Ken?
Well, let's...
So, so I was, I wasn't realizing that this is Rogers land right here, so, these, these houses are backing right up immediately to Rogers land, and so would need a, the path to go through his land in order to connect from this corner of Phipps out to the land of the west.
I think there's a connection over in the, in the bottom left.
There's, there's a connection that goes out
Right.
From Phipps, going northeast.
Yes, and there's also one here.
Right, that goes south, though.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Is, Roy, is this bot, this one here, where we've got some red and blue?
Right here, Roy.
That, that's right into Rogers, into the solar farm, into a seven-foot pen.
Actually, it's not, you see this line right here? This line is Rogers property right here, this is his piece here.
Okay, so it's...
So this is actually...
So it's on our side of it?
It's on, correct.
The original plan just goes down through that athletic parcel and out easement.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so, so that, that one can work as a connection. That's probably a key connection right there, 'cause that's the one we promised for horses from the people on East Main Street.
Correct.
And this one from the Wilson Street side over here, is that from the halt land? Or is that from, oh, I, I see, it's, it's actually from the gas easement that goes through there.
Yep.
Okay, so that's through the municipal parcel, basically.
But you can't really park there, you can just...
You cannot park there.
You can only access the trailhead there.
Yeah, and you cannot really park really well on Wilson Street at that point.
Or any other.
Yeah, exactly, that.
Maybe, I doubt, don't wanna do that. Serenity, Serenity House has got a nice parking lot, and after they raise Serenity House, maybe we could get a trail location there, but that would be from, from ever so.
I don't think the gas company would mind that.
Maybe.
I can talk to them if you'd like.
That would be nice, yeah.
Very good, turn it down?
Yeah.
Did you guys put in those proposed gravel trail head parking?
We did, yeah, there's two that are...
Yeah, we were gonna get to that, but...
Okay, okay.
No, that's okay.
Let's, I think, are there other questions about trail routings? It, it, go ahead.
The 11 o'clock one that goes from Legacy North to Kruger?
Yep.
It's, it's, is that, and this word might encourage people to go down Kruger and go try to get to the lake, which they can't really do, it's blocked off, but I was wondering maybe you could curve it around with the road and make a nice scenic pathway, maybe hook up on the other side. This is a nice, what if, kind of question, but...
Well, we're, we're gonna spend more time on that one when we do the site plan for that parcel, 'cause that will get impacted by that.
I couldn't see over your [inaudible].
I was saying, because you're behind the lake, reservoir, and you can't, it's all private property, you can't get to the lake. But, like, Ken [inaudible].
We'll revisit that.
Well, you can go down Rafferty Road to get to the lake, if you're, if you're going that way. Okay.
That's where I'm gonna park.
The, let's talk about parking, let's, let's start talking down in here, and I'm gonna talk to it in the context of trails, as opposed to the roadway. Is there any way that you can connect these dead ends along here?
That's a great question, we, we've looked at that, we've looked at several different sketches for this area, and what we are really trying to do is preserve a mature stand of existing trees.
You can see it right here, Matt, it really shows it better.
Yeah, if you flip back to page one, there's a, there's a significant grade change between those two, between these two locations. So there's this kind of rocky ridge with some pretty significant mature vegetation there, so we've intentionally not connected it, so that we could maintain all of that, those mature trees.
Can, if you point out that...
Absolutely. Let me flip back to that color.
Well, he's flipping to that, we did meet with the, with the new fire chief today, and also the inspector, Tom Corrie, we went over our, our turnarounds and our access, and, you know, we'll be meeting with them again and making some revisions, but in general, they were, they were okay with the hammerheads and the, and the overall access and layout.
The area Ken was pointing out was down here in the northwest village, trying to connect these two roads through here, and there's quite a bit of grade separation between this street and this street, and on that grade change are these existing mature trees that we're trying to maintain, so we purposely didn't make that connection through there.
We, we did, for another developer, it was a choice between a hammerhead and a cul-de-sac, and it turned out the hammerhead actually had more pervious surface. And so, based on that, we, we as a board on this other one chose to go with the cul-de-sac as opposed to the hammerhead. Those three, if they're not gonna connect, in my opinion, getting a circle where particularly at the one, the two with the trail connections are potentially really good parking locations for people wanting to access the, the trail system and get to the high point with the least amount of effort. For some of us that have not completed their cardiac rehab, those might be some neat places to go. In fact, I know I've enjoyed driving up into that area this year, I'm well ready to hike it.
I agree with Ken 100%.
And some of these, I can see the proposed gravel trailhead off of Legacy Farms Road, that connects, but then this one here, you got a gravelhead trail parking that doesn't connect to a trail.
Well, it connects to the path system, that's, the sidewalk that's along Legacy Farms Road.
Mm-hmm.
And then that connects, connects you to really every, every trail crossing that touches Legacy Farms Road along that whole frontage.
You talked about some parking areas, and I thought when you came to design the view there, and I pointed out some parking, where is that?
Yeah, that was right here, and right here, those gray boxes represent some, some parking areas that are pull off from Legacy Farms North.
Like six cars, 10 cars?
Four cars each.
Four cars?
Total of eight.
So that hasn't changed, we're still showing that, Claire.
But it'll still head in and then back out into the road?
For right now, we're kind of looking at that at this point, but, but that's, those are shown as head in spaces at this point.
Are they backing out onto Legacy Farms Road?
Yeah, that doesn't sound to be too good.
Doesn't sound good.
I mean, I think our, our initial proposal is that they're low use, low, low use spaces, and then rather than making a huge parking lot or making a huge gravel area, it's really a, a place for four cars to pull off, and, and, you know, we thought that was...
I think you're gonna have much more use than eight cars, based on the number of people that you see out there walking their dogs and whatever on a, on a nice day.
I agree with that.
You know, part of, part of this problem with, with the, with the road network, there's no excess parking anywhere other than in somebody's front driveway, and, you know, nobody's gonna go park in front of somebody's garage door. So, I mean, you've gotta create more of the amenity that I think that Claire mentioned at the last meeting, as far as trail parking.
Which just includes backing onto a 40 mile an hour road, service [inaudible].
You know, if, if, wherever, wherever there's a connection, it's not only for the neighborhood, but it's for other folks that might wanna, you know, start off at that point.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, your drive A or whatever it is could be a little bit wider, you know, and have some parallel parking or something at, at that particular area, or somehow, I, I'm not trying to design it to that, I'm just trying to give you parameters.
So could I get clarification from the board, and just something that I wanna understand better? So I understand Legacy Farms Road North will be a public way when it's accepted by the town, and therefore we located the public gravel parking areas off of the public way so that they could access the public trails, which go through the open space. And I think we expect that our, the private villages have pedestrian access through the private villages, you know, to connect the, the Legacy Farms Road, Road North to our sidewalk system and onto the trail, so pedestrian access. But what I'm hearing, what I think I'm hearing and understanding is that we're, we're discussing additional parking areas for the trails that are actually in the private condominium development, which would be talking about vehicular access to the public through the private development. Is that, is that...
Mr. Chairman, I guess I have two questions. Do you think four in each location is sufficient? If not, should it be five? And of the two locations that have been chosen, good spots for those? I think we should probably think about that, because if it's four, if it's five, I think we can rethink the design a bit so it's safer.
I think it's more than five, but that's just me. I, I, you know, you got, you got 60 something acres worth of open space in one, you know, which is prime walking, and, and, you know, I, I suspect that you've got more than that kind of doing it on a regular basis.
Could I interest the question of the bike trail at some point?
Let's, no, let's, let's answer Roy's question.
It's gonna bear on it, because if, if we're gonna have a bike trail going to Hopkin and State Park along the west side, along some of these trails, then we're talking a lot more people, and so the logical place for parking would be wherever that trail crosses Legacy Farms North, which is close to, is close to the northernmost of the two, and parking on place. But I wanna know whether you guys are really, you know, I've been led along to believe, and my committees believe for the last several years, that there's gonna be a bike path going all the way from East Main Street along the west side of Legacy Farms to Hopkin and State Park.
Well, somewhere it's on the east side, but it switches over.
Right, and it's designed to be wider, so that you can [inaudible].
It's eight feet, eight feet if I remember correctly.
No, but this, let me make, make it clear what I'm talking about, because maybe we're talking at different things here. I'm expecting this trail to come, to come from about the Methodist property on Main Street, to proceed past the athletic fields in this area, come around here, perhaps right along where, where this trail's marked, but I'm expecting it to be like a 12-foot wide bike path in, in, in accordance with state regulations for bike paths. This, this is the whole vision of, of our committee and all the other towns and, and around, Paulston and [inaudible].
[inaudible] Dr. Parker? Part of Legacy Farm Road North starts more eastwardly now, and then, as you see from the bottom, hooks up along the easternmost side of the property, then hooks up and around north, and is actually due westbound when you're coming up from the south. Yeah, so it's, instead of going up to Middle Road, it's now going up and around, arcing around.
I understand that.
Right, okay.
Well, there is a paved, I'm gonna say sidewalk, bike trail, walking path similar to what's on Legacy Farms Road South, that goes all the way along Legacy Farms Road North.
All the way down to Rughead and Five.
All the ways...
And nobody that is, is a bike rider would be on that sidewalk normally, other than maybe a five-year-old.
Well, there's...
They can go on the road, though.
It's not designed for bicycles, come on, let's be real. It's designed for pedestrians, it's great for pedestrians and baby carriages and five-year-olds on tricycles. It's not designed, it was not envisioned for adults to ride bicycles on that sidewalk, and that's, well, it could be the case for Legacy Farms North, but if so, it's gonna have to be wider than it is on Legacy Farms South. It's just not the same thing, a sidewalk is not a bike path.
Actually, the sidewalk on Legacy South and the sidewalk on Legacy North are both eight feet wide. A normal sidewalk's five feet, I'm not saying whether it's right for bicycles or not, but it is eight feet wide. If, if, if we can, 'cause I know we're very short time, to keep the design going, we could spend a couple of minutes just talking about the two parking areas. Are they in the right place, number one? And if they, if they are, can we, if we need to increase the amount of parking, would you like to design that to bring it back to the appropriate amount of parking? Whether that's four cars, six cars, eight cars? I mean, just trying to get a little direction on that.
If, if that's the only way the public's gonna get in, then four, four each is not gonna make it. And I don't like the design of pulling back out type thing onto a 35 mile an hour road.
No, it's gotta be...
We'll actually bring a little, a driveway in, so you won't have to do that.
You can just little turnaround right inside there.
Yeah, we'll have a turnaround, so it'll be fine, you won't have to do that.
Now, I also don't have a problem if you took on one of these at the end of the Juniper Street, if you put a cul-de-sac and you actually brought it over into the restricted land and had the parking, put the whole cul-de-sac on the restricted land, you know, maybe that makes up for your, your one house that you were missing in that area. Put, put the cul-de-sac on the restricted land, and that's, and where the parking could be around the, the cul-de-sac.
But then we're talking people accessing that parking lot from going right through these, uh, uh, right?
Right, then that was my question, and I was trying to-
Yeah, plus if I'm a, if I'm that a butter, I don't wanna look at it, no.
Well, then, I guess, then the board needs to talk about, all the restricted land throughout this whole development is open to the public, even those pieces in and amongst those, those units. So if the public isn't going to be able to get there, then why is it restricted?
Well, they'll get there, they just can't necessarily bring it across, that's the big difference.
I mean, I mean, if you got a restricted land that you can't access, then it's not worth anything.
Well, we have pedestrian access to it, just not, not a place to park at, at all of it.
Vehicular access to it is off of the Legacy Farm Road North at, at any and all of the connections.
And some of the nicest land for walking is, is further into the site, um, so it would be nice to have some good access points, um, to allow people to get to those trails from, from different areas.
Part of the vision is, isn't to get to that land from the south, from the athletic field?
Well, I-
I was hoping so.
I mean, there is a trail from the athletic field.
Yeah.
But to me, to me, it would be desirable to be have some parking up, up the hill, as close as you can get up there.
Up here?
Well-
Up off, down here, here in Tennessee, closer up to our, to our Wilson. Whereabouts?
You know, you wanna get, right now, you drive up, if you, if you're going up there, you drive up a bunch of the farm roads, which are all gone, and-
Excuse me, one second. One thing you might think about, this is Wilson Street here. We actually have a paved, it's quasi, I'll call it quasi-paved, just got some noise in it. There's, there's a road here right now, and it's been here for almost ever. It comes all the way up to here, I'm wondering if we cleared the brush away, just so you don't scratch your car. You literally could drive into a little area right here, or right here.
That would work, that would work, I think.
Matter of fact, this might be the place you could actually put, you know, eight or ten cars right in here. And the nice thing about being here, you're out of everybody's way, and you can leave, and they're in all different directions.
That, 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 that kinda works for me.
I think if you did that in conjunction with the two you had over here, I'd get strategically three locations, two in Legacy Farms Road North, and another one off the Wilson Street coming from three different directions.
That's probably a good compromise.
Plus you keep it out of the subdivisions there, because-
Well, no, you keep it away.
Well, that's what I'm saying, right, so-
No, you'd be, you'd be way back here somewhere.
Right, but what I'm saying, right, you're not driving in, right, so, the other way, if you come off Legacy North, like the original proposal-
Well, you wouldn't come in here at all.
Correct, right, I think it's a benefit.
Exactly, so everything gets a privacy, at the same time, you could do a nice parking area here, it's actually very pretty driving in there.
In, in addition to parking. In addition to the other parking spaces.
The spots on Legacy North.
So now, just for us, let's say you did six in each of these, and you did maybe another six or eight over here, you'd have twenty parking spaces.
That's very cool.
Are there comparable public parking spots on the south parcel to access those?
There are three.
And where are those located?
Down by the pont, the bridge.
Okay.
We call those the Ken Weisman parking spaces.
Reserved? No, no, they've been parking the water truck in there for the last two months.
They stopped doing that after we got in, I do know.
Yes, I guess I, I did insist on those, if people remember on the board. Okay, hey, we're, we're beyond our witching hour, they're gonna throw us out of the building. I think we made some progress. I think we're about three-quarters of the way done from, from trails, I think we'll, we'll hit the restricted versus restricted land and the small strips and those hard questions. Kinda along with that, we can talk with the restricted land, the mature trees and cuts and fills, and, you know, kind of that, kind of ends up the, I'll say, a lot of the design parameters, maybe, and then the rest of them are, are more on the standards of how do we do construction management? Or may, you know, I wanna, I wanna at our next meeting try to get through it like, design-type stuff, so that, and then, well, maybe we can focus in on construction management, but basically, so, kinda pick and choose on these, if you see ones that are more design-related, let's, let's, we'll, we'll focus on those at the next.
If I may, we've been working with Beta, they gave us a very comprehensive peer review of design-related comments, and we also met with the Design Review Board.
Okay.
And so we have a number of comments that we've been working on, and we have a lot of ideas that we wanted to share with the board tonight, so if we could have some time at the next meeting, we could share our ideas and what we want to do to tweak the design in order to,
Okay.
you know, improve the, the design and address a lot of the comments that we've, the, the site design-related comments we've gotten from your consultants.
Okay.
And some of the materials in the package that I gave you tonight go to that, and we, we have sort of a summary diagram on page eight, and then some, um, additional exhibits that kinda walk through some of these potential design changes that we wanted to get your, your input on, so maybe that would be a good,
Okay.
a good thing to use as kind of a jumping off point next, next meeting.
Okay.
I have one comment before, Roy, to your final question, one of your questions was, the two trailheads, do we think they're in the right place on Legacy, Legacy North? The first one, I think is in the right place, the second one, do you think it would make any sense to take it a little farther north, because another inch or two up, then you have access to both the south trail as well as the north trail? I don't know if that's feasible or not, but if somebody would-
We can look at that, there's, as you get further north, it's graded, so that's why we put it back.
Okay.
But there, but there is another toll road right there, that you could have another connection.
That way people kinda, you're talking up, up here.
Kinda put it closer to the gas pipeline.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Again, just a thought, just if somebody's trying to go, let them go north or south.
We'll look at parking.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Elaine, what time and date do we have next available?
February eighth at eight thirty.
Are we taking up the restricted land covenant?
Okay, so-
Mr. Chairman, just a point of reference, uh, the lawn has now been installed fully on the athletic field parcel, and the, uh, the waters have been put around the entire perimeter of the pile, so whenever we finalize the restricted covenant, we're ready to transfer that onto the town.
Great, let's, let's work on that at our next meeting, too, as a separate agenda item. I'll try to get that resolved. Has somebody from the towns, Elaine, looked at the pile and made sure it's got enough yards or somehow?
Is the pile complete?
The pile's complete, and if you want, we can have somebody shoot it, but I'm confident the right amount of lawns is there.
Okay, you probably counted the number of trucks.
You did.
Anything that can help verify that, that would be okay, but, uh-
If you want, we'll get certification from the law.
Whatever. It's up to Elaine to, to, for, for her to be happy. Okay, okay. Move to continue both public hearings to the February eighth at eight thirty. Second. Moving second, it's early discussion, seeing then how you vote.
Aye.
Anywhere opposed, anywhere abstaining, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm gonna take you off the draw, if you can take it.
Where, where do you want to go?
He lives in Arbor, Arbor. So he's just right around the corner.
School Street.
School and Elm Street. That'll, that'll save me. Oh, by the way, the lieutenant governor's here at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, as to do with a compact with the town regarding planning for the trap property at the lake. So, nine o'clock, lieutenant governor's here on Friday night at eleven, or at, at five to seven on Friday, is, the governor's coming to help.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to get to the early part.
Okay.
Where's he gonna be?
Do you wanna schedule a sidewalk of Legacy North for the Saturday?
What's the weather gonna be looking like?
Not so good, not so bad, so far.
No, maybe, that's not, we don't wanna-
So we, we'll, we'll assess that in a couple more days, but, yeah, uh, we might, you know, maybe, well, it's snow cover, but- Have you been up there walking your dog, Claire?
Oh, yeah.
Is it, is it accessible enough?
Well, it depends on what you call accessible, I mean, the road's fine, but if you go off, it's about as much snow.
So, so small boots, snow boots? Okay. I, I turned down the, Elaine suggested we walk last Saturday in seventeen-degree weather.
Well, it was softer when I brought my daughter-in-law's dog, he went up to his belly in the mud on the side, that was-
Okay. Uh, look for a motion to adjourn, thank you all for staying late.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor of adjournings, say aye, aye. Motion carries.